Good afternoon and welcome to the City Council Meeting of April 3rd. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask that you all rise for the singing of the National Anthem. Thank you to the National Film Board for the images of our country and to our very own Tenille Towns for the singing of our National Anthem. I move on to the adoption of the previous council minutes. Counselor Palat.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the minutes of the previous council minutes.
Thanks for that motion. Seeing no one in the queue, comments or concerns, I'll call the question. Counselor O'Toole in favor? And that carries unanimously. Moving on to the adoption of today's agenda, Counselor O'Connor. That motion is in order. Seeing no one in the queue, I'll call the question. And that too carries unanimously. Moving on to the delegation portion of today's meeting. For those of you who are watching online, if you'd like to attend our council meetings, there is a process. It's very simple to follow and it is online. Fill out paperwork and just need to let us know if you're coming to the afternoon or the evening portion of our meeting. Today, we have one delegation that let us know ahead of time they are coming and I would invite up to the table the Grand Prairie Public School Board. I know you're aware, but I'll reiterate it in case people are confused. Take about five minutes to go through your presentation, then I'll open it up to council with an opportunity for questions. Delegation business gets handled at the end of this portion of the meeting and I'll turn it over for you. Just introduce yourself, please, for those who are watching at home.
Perfect, thanks Mayor Clayton. And also thanks to council and city administration reaching out to gather feedback from us and our organization. I'm Joan Nellis, I'm the Board Chair for Grand Prairie Public School Division.
And I'm Sandy McDonald, Superintendent of Schools for the Grand Prairie Public School Division.
Thanks for coming today.
Yeah, so we're here to provide a little bit of shedding some light on what our purposes are for a domed style turf facility in Grand Prairie. And we'd just like to affirm that, you know, a domed indoor field service does hold value to our students and our school division in general. We support the AERR, the Avondale Area Redevelopment Plan, or something to that name of that. And I think in the medium term planning, it was looking for an enclosed building. An enclosed in building makes sense to us and a dome also makes sense to us, especially on the site of the old composite high school. We support that in principle, just to put that out there. We like the partnership that we have and having what our boards holds value to us is when our students can use a facility, that we can further sports in our community and support the community with our land. So that's some of the things that we are in support of.
Thank you, Joan. Through the mayor, thank you everyone for the opportunity to come speak today a little bit about the needs of the school division with respect to a facility of this type. It was our understanding from administration that you're looking for feedback on size and utility and that sort of thing. And so really pleased to be able to share our perspective as a school division. Our interests in this area are to see a facility of this nature be entered into as a facility accessible through the Scores Agreement that exists in the city of Grand Prairie. That would provide opportunities for our students to access it during the school day. With respect to size, we believe an indoor turf type facility should be large enough to have two different kinds of activities going on at any one time. It's been our experience that that provides the best support for both schools and student use during the day, but also for community programs for our preschool and/or other community groups. A site of that nature has the potential to be multi-purpose, to provide the field space for running or turf type activities, but also we've seen them used in sport activities like baseball or rugby, batting cages, that sort of thing. We know there's a lot of different competing needs within the community and those same needs exist within our schools' physical education programs. We've got opportunities for lacrosse and baseball and that sort of thing to happen there. Basically, our principle with respect to a facility like this is to support it in whatever way we are able to, to align our students' needs with those of the community.
Perfect. That's all we had?
All right, well, I appreciate you coming today.
We won't be able to take questions today.
Sorry, that's the deal. It's a two-way deal.
Fair enough.
Recognizing Counselor Blackmore in the queue.
Well, thank you for coming today. It's always good to know what people want to see in their neighborhood and that includes the neighborhood of schools. I have heard, and I don't know, so this I'm asking, that you're looking at developing a baseball program for the composite. I don't know if that's true or not, and would this enhance or not enhance that direction?
Well, I think any, through the mayor, potential development of programs is something that's always ongoing. We have had some conversations. I don't know where we're at with respect to moving forward into actually delivering the programming, but we've had some discussions about that. Would a facility like this add value to that program? Yes, if it was accessible.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Berg?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Clayton. First off, congratulations Superintendent McDonald, being awarded the EXL Award for Excellence in School System Leadership. This is the first chance I've had to see you and well deserved and thank you for all you do in the community.
Through the mayor, thank you, Counselor Berg. It's humbling to receive a recognition like that. It really should go to the staff and students of the school division. I just tell their story.
Wonderful. So my question is, the last conversation we had around a footprint, there's potentially three different owners of the land, your school division, the city, and then another school division. You don't anticipate any issues around that footprint covering a number of different owners?
Mr. McDonald?
Through the mayor, no, I don't believe so. We've had some discussions. The land ownership, kind of on the parcel that we're talking about, kind of makes sense. It goes other school divisions, city than our land. There are more complex intricacies of land ownership when you move further, across the road, further west. We've had some preliminary discussions with city staff about the possibilities of kind of resolving the complexities of that land ownership. With respect to our nine and a third acres or approximately represent the existing composite high school site, we've had discussions as a school division with our board and we're flexible with respect to what we need to do to support the development of that as per the area redevelopment plan for that Avondale High School sites. And we don't have any competing interests in it and so if there's an opportunity for our school division to work with the city to partner, and it requires us to be flexible on that, to provide space for a facility that will benefit the community and the school division, we're certainly open to whatever solutions are needed.
Thank you. And a follow-up, mayor?
Yes.
Parking, I know you've already got an existing parking lot there. Any idea roughly how many stalls there are for that?
None, sorry, through the mayor, none. And actually, the plans for the site redevelopment have the parking lot on the east side being removed and remediated back to field space.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for that. Counselor Bosch?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Thank you, Joan, and thank you for coming, sending accolades to your achievement. Well done. The timeline for demolition of the leisure center, what are you looking at through the province right now? When will they be done?
Through the mayor, thank you for the question, Counselor Bosch. I believe they're coming on site within the next month or so to begin preparations. The first step is the remediation of any hazardous materials in the shop area and some of the legacy construction pieces of the building, but they should be getting at it by the spring, summer, I think. I don't think it's going to be too delayed.
And do you know the timeline it will take to be said and done?
I don't. I do know that whenever they finish, it's another year or so before there's anybody going on the fields.
That was one of the concerns that we had.
I'm sorry, that was just from if it was going to be used as field space, to green space, to get it landscaped and seeded and everything.
So if I can just jump in, I think your question was how long will the demolition take? And that'd just be a matter of months. And then whatever happens after that is to be determined, I suppose.
Can I ask another question? My other question is-
It's a follow-up, because I have a full queue.
Okay, no, it's not a follow-up. It's another question.
Counselor O'Connor, get back in the queue, Counselor Bosch.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Thank you, congrats again for your work. We're looking at three different parcels of land where this could potentially go. Regardless of where it goes, is the school division looking for a partnership with the city and whatever community group may run the facility? Are you open for that possibility or?
So can I just, before you answer that, maybe clarify that a little bit for Counselor O'Connor? I think his question is regardless of where the school or a recreation facility ends, are you looking to be part of a Scores Agreement? Kind of tricky if it's not on school land, so go ahead and-
I'll try it.
-see fit and I can answer him correctly later.
Thank you. Through the mayor, I think the correct answer is probably maybe.
Yeah.
No.
Good answer.
Any recreation facility that has the opportunity to be added to the Scores Agreement in a way that supports its effective and efficient use, I think makes sense to us and we would welcome that kind of partnership.
Okay, thank you and I'll get the rest of the information from the mayor. Thanks.
Thanks for that. Counselor Palat?
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. Good to see you again, Joan, good to see you again, Sandy, congrats as well. Just to kind of build off of Counselor Connor's question, I'm just wondering if it did land in one of the other locations with the comp site still being potentially green space or could build into something else. Is that a concern for you guys if it did go somewhere else versus there specifically? As long as it's going to be part of a Scores Agreement, does it?
Through the chair, I think that the comp space has access to a lot of schools. There's, I think, five in walking distance, so that's an added benefit. It's cost-saving when you don't have to bus kids to get recreation. Some of the other sites you've been talking about aren't quite as accessible to our students. Is it a concern? No, it'd be great if it was in the Scores Agreement so that we could still have that partnership in use, but it wouldn't be as used.
And through the chair, if I might add, there's a portion of the physical education curriculum that has, that kind of requires students to go off school site to access different facilities in the community and we have students, well, all schools in the city have students traveling all over the city based on needs and I don't think that would be a barrier for us accessing anywhere else. It's for us, those schools that are closest to the East Link, for example, are able to make the most use of it because they can stretch their budgets and the sites located, different facility located elsewhere in the city, the schools that are closest to that would make the best use of that.
Thank you.
I'm just going to jump in the queue before I go to Counselor Bosch. I just wanted to reaffirm that, and just say yes or no is great, but in your opinion, the long-term, the Avondale Long-Term Area Redevelopment Plan still lines with your priorities, correct?
Yes.
Okay, perfect, thanks. Counselor Bosch?
Well, that wasn't a long wait. Thanks. So my question essentially is, with this redevelopment plan and as long as it may take, potentially in whether in our mind, you know how things just seem to take longer, are you in agreement for the potential build of this dome so that you at least have something on the property versus potentially waiting and having nothing? Exactly where is your mindset? That's really the question.
Yeah, through the chair, our board wanted Sandy, or Superintendent McDonald and I to come here and affirm that a dome would be great in that area. We also support the AERR, so the dome is on the table today. We'd love to have it at the comp site today.
Thank you.
All right, I think that's it for the queue, so thanks so much for coming today.
Thank you for the opportunity.
No other delegations, let us know they were attending our meeting today. So we're going to move on to reports. There are no other reports, so moving on to committee business. Council Committee of the whole meeting of March 27th, if I could get Counselor Bressi on that one.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I would move that council adopt the minutes of the council committee of the whole meeting held March 27th, 2023 as presented.
Thanks for that. Any comments or questions on that? Seeing none, call the question.
Counselor Bosch in favor?
And that carries unanimously. Moving on to item 7.2, the Public and Protective Services Committee meeting held March 28th. And I will look to Counsel Bressi.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I would move that council adopt the minutes of the Public and Protective Services Committee meeting held March 28th, 2023 as presented.
That motion is in order, seeing no one in the queue with any concerns, errors or omissions. Call the question, please vote. That carries unanimously. And you have a few items of business, Counselor Bressi.
Yeah, thank you. First of all, I would move that council approve free transit for all youth ages six to 17 and direct administrations prepare amendments to the fees, rates, and charges by law to reflect these changes. And just to speak to this, I really hope the council will support this. I think helping young people get around our community in a safe, accessible way is great for their quality of life. It's great for their social connection. It's great for them as they're getting first jobs or going to various recreation opportunities. So it's great for them while they're kids, but also my hope is if we can get more young people riding the bus, that they continue to ride the bus when they're adults. And there are just more and more young people these days that are choosing not to drive or can't afford to drive when they graduate high school, while if they're comfortable using our transit system, I think they're a lot more likely to choose to stay in our community. I also think that as we talk about transit, we're always talking about how do we get that system to be more efficient and get better bang for our buck, while the best way to do that is to get more people on the buses. So I think in the long term, it's something that is an upfront investment, but I think in the long term will actually make, be financially favorable for the transit system. So I hope the council will approve these changes today.
Perfect for that. Thanks for that introduction, Counselor Bressi, and that motion. Comments or discussion and debate, rather? Counselor Bosch?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I am totally in agreement with this, however, I would like to ask Ms. Whiteway if we would know where these $90,000 is coming from for 2023. I know we can work into the budget for '24, but where is that coin coming from?
Counselor, or sorry, CFO Whiteway?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. So the $90,000 management has determined that we would first ensure the 2023 end balanced. If it was required, the financial stabilization reserve would be used at year end, but we will try to offset with other cost savings as we can throughout the year.
Perfect, thank you.
All right. Counselor Berg?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Clayton. So if this passes, is there a start date that this would take effect?
I will turn that to our Chief Protective and Public Services Officer, Mr. Lemieux.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So if this passes today, there's some work to be done before we implement this. Number one is a bylaw that has to change that can happen relatively quickly. We are then working with the school boards. We'll start those, we've had some preliminary conversations, we'll continue those conversations. Through the school boards, we feel is the best way to get the super pass to all of those individuals. It's important that they have a super pass so we could track usage. So I can't commit the school divisions, but to a timeline, but we'll work very hard with them to make this happen as quickly as we can. Most likely this summer or September would be ideal.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thanks for that and seeing no one else in the queue, I'll call the question. Please vote. And that carries unanimously. Counselor Bressi?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I would move that council approve in principle funding of up to $10 million through the venture for an indoor recreation facility. And just to speak to this, I think there is more information and vigorous debate by council still needing to decide exactly where to put a recreation facility and what form it should take, but I hope that we all will agree that there's a great need for more indoor recreation in the city now that the leisure center is closed and as we're seeing growth in many of our youth sports communities. So I hope the council will approve this.
Thanks, I see no one else in the queue, so I'll jump in here. I particularly appreciate the wording on the motion to be in principle, I think-
great for their quality of life, it's great for their social connection, it's great for them as they're getting first jobs or going to various recreation opportunities. So it's great for them while they're kids, but also, my hope is if we can get more young people riding the bus, that they continue to ride the bus when they're adults. And there are just more and more young people these days that are choosing not to drive or can't afford to drive when they graduate high school, while if they're comfortable using our transit system, I think they're a lot more likely to choose to stay in our community. I also think that as we talk about transit, we're always talking about how do we get that system to be more efficient and get better bang for our buck, while the best way to do that is to get more people on the buses. So I think in the long term, it's something that is an upfront investment, but I think in the long term will actually make, be financially favorable for the transit system. So I hope the council will approve these changes today.
Perfect for that. Thanks for that introduction, Counselor Bressi, and that motion. Comments or discussion and debate, rather? Counselor Bosch.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I am totally in agreement with this, however, I would like to ask Ms. White Way if we would know where these $90,000 is coming from for 2023. I know we can look, work into the budget for '24, but where, where's that coin coming from?
Counselor, or sorry, CFO White Way.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. So the $90,000 management has determined that we would first ensure the 2023 end balanced. If it was required, the financial stabilization reserve would be used at, at year-end, but we will try to offset with other cost savings as we can throughout the year.
Perfect, thank you.
All right. Counselor Berg.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Clayton. So if this passes, is there a start date that this would take effect?
I will turn that to our Chief Protective and Public Services Officer, Mr. Lemieux.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So if this passes today, there's some work to be done before we implement this. Number one is a, a bylaw that has to change that can happen relatively quickly. We are then working with the school boards, we'll start those, we've had some preliminary conversations, we'll continue those conversations. Through the school boards, we feel is the best way to get the super pass to all of those individuals. It's important that they have a super pass so we could track usage. So I, I can't commit the school divisions, but to a timeline, but we'll work very hard with them to make this happen as quickly as we can. Most likely this summer or September would be ideal.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thanks for that, and seeing no one else in the queue, I'll call the question. Please vote. And that carries unanimously. Counselor Bressi.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I would move that council approve, in principle, funding of up to $10 million through the venture for an indoor recreation facility. And just speak to this, I think there is more information and vigorous debate by council still needing to decide exactly where to put a recreation facility and what form it should take, but I hope that we all will agree that there's a great need for more indoor recreation in the city now that the leisure center is closed and as we're seeing growth in many of our youth sports communities. So I hope the council will approve this.
Thanks, I see no one else in the queue, so I'll jump in here. I, I particularly appreciate the wording on the motion to be in principle. I think it's important to recognize that this region works very well with its municipal partners, and that being said, we, on a regular basis, talk about opportunities for collaboration. This in particular is a great opportunity for us to have collaboration with our municipal partners. As discussed at Standing Committee, Committee directed me to continue conversations. We will, through our intermunicipal collaboration committee, have conversations of what this could look like to be a facility that would be supported from our municipal partners. So knowing that the motion is in principle, I think that it's appropriate, and I will support the motion. Seeing no one else in the queue, I'll call the question. That carries unanimously. Highlights from your meeting, Counselor Bressi.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. The, the place we spent most of our conversation was about this potential indoor recreation, recreation facility. We spent a lot of time talking about the potential land in Smith where this could go, and there was, there was a recommendation from committee sent to council to put it, to debate putting it there. There's a little bit more work from our administration that needs to happen to set up that debate, so that'll be coming to an, to a council meeting very soon. Some other points of business we did was we had a great presentation from STARS. We're in the 15-year club, where we've been supporting them for over 15 years. We're one of the leading municipal partners of STARS, so it was exciting to hear about some of the advances in safety and public health that we've got to contribute to over a decade and a half of partnership. And I think I'll, I think I'll leave it there.
Great. Thanks for recognizing the STARS comment. I think that if I recall correctly, we were the first municipality in Alberta to get to $1 million, so something we really should be proud of in this support that we've provided, that key essential part of our healthcare deliverables. Seeing nothing else, I'll move on to item 7.3, Financial Administration Services Committee meeting of March 28th, and I'll look to Counselor Blackmore.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I would move that council adopt the minutes of the Financial and Administrative Services Committee meeting held March 28th, as presented.
Perfect, that motion is in order. Seeing no one in the queue, I'll call the question. That carries unanimously, and you have a couple items of business, Counselor Blackmore.
I, yes, I would like to move that council approved amendments to Policy C346, as presented. And I'm going to open that and tell you a little bit more about it. Well, that didn't work. iPads, you gotta love them. I got it, Mike, yeah. So Policy 346 is, discusses prudent, discusses prudent business practices that will enhance the city's financial strength, and it deals with the reserve policy to allow flexibility, cash flow management, and the ability for the city to achieve council's strategic plan, which is, you know, what is important to us, while providing for property tax stabilization, provision of consistent service levels, and reducing the need for debt financing. And so this policy looks at the different types of reserves we have and basically discusses how we will manage reserves in each of those. And we've discussed this in previous years as well, and I think it's really housekeeping, but I'd look to our Chief Financial Officer, Danielle White Way, to confirm that or disagree with me if, as she sees fit.
So I can say, in particular, there's the addition of the municipal police service reserve that has been added to the amendment, but our CFO, White Way, if you have anything else to add, that would be great.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I do not, that is the, I guess the change that was proposed was to add the additional reserve to that existing policy.
Perfect. Any comments or questions? I apologize, Counselor Blackmore, have you made a motion yet?
Um, yes, I did.
Yes, okay.
No, I did.
I don't know. Yes, the motion is, okay, so there is a motion in, in order. I will see if there's any discussion or debate on the motion, and basically it's an amendment to Policy 346, the reserve fund policy. This amendment is to add the police service reserve, in essence. So seeing no one in the queue, I'll call the question. And that carries unanimously. Counselor Blackmore.
I also have a number of motions pertaining to bylaw C1456, which is the Business Tax Improvement Bylaw.
Perfect, and before you start that, I'll just recognize Counselor Bosch.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I'll recuse myself from this one, thank you.
So Counselor Bosch has declared a conflict in regards to discussion and debate on this business improvement area assessment bylaw. Please go ahead, Counselor Blackmore.
I'd move that council give first reading to bylaw C1456, being the Business Tax Assessment 2023 bylaw. Every year, the business tax assessment is approved by bylaw, and so every year we have to change the bylaws, and that's what this series of motions is going to do today.
Perfect, thanks for that introduction. Introduction, no discussion or debate on first reading, please vote. And that carries unanimously. Counselor Blackmore.
And I would move that council give second reading to bylaw C1456.
So this is a motion for second reading on bylaw C-1456, opportunity for discussion or debate. Seeing no one in the queue, I'll call the question. And that carries unanimously. Counselor Blackmore.
I would move that council give third reading of bylaw C1456 at this meeting.
That motion is in order. This must pass unanimously in order for us to have third reading here today. I'll call the question. That carries unanimously. Counselor Blackmore.
I would move third reading of bylaw C1456.
That motion is in order. Seeing no one in the queue, I'll call the question. Please vote. That too carries unanimously. Moving on, Counselor Blackmore.
I move that council give first reading to bylaw C1457, being the Downtown Business Improvement Area Business Tax 2023 bylaw.
That motion is in order, so that is the first reading of bylaw C-1457. I'll call the question. And that carries unanimously. Counselor Blackmore.
I would move second reading of bylaw C1457.
Motion to have second reading, opportunity for discussion or debate on bylaw C-1457. Seeing no one in the queue, I will call the question. Counselor Plott, how do you vote? Counselor Plott votes in favor. And that carries unanimously. Counselor Blackmore.
I would move that council have third reading of bylaw C1457 at this meeting.
That motion is in order, in order for us to have third reading here tonight. This must pass unanimously. It's a third reading on bylaw C-1457. I'll call the question. And that does carry unanimously. Counselor Blackmore.
Moving right along to council give first reading to bylaw-
Oh, sorry, just give third reading.
Sorry, I missed one.
That's all right.
Counsel give third reading to bylaw C1457, being the Downtown Business Improvement Area Tax.
All right, so this is third reading on bylaw C-1457. I'll call the question. And that carries unanimously. Now moving on, Counselor By, or Counselor Bylaw, you are tonight, apparently.
I feel like Counselor Bylaw. I move that council give first reading to bylaw C1458, being the Downtown Business Area Improvement Tax Rate 2023 bylaw.
Perfect, so we had the bylaw to have the tax, now this is the bylaw for the tax rate. No discussion or debate on first reading, so I'll call the question, please vote. And that carries unanimously. Counselor Blackmore.
And I would move second reading of bylaw C1458. And maybe I'll say, it sounds like we're just motoring through this with no discussion or debate, but we've already had the discussion and the debate at a previous meeting, and this is really housekeeping, and we really need to fix this procedure.
Thanks for your comments. So this is a motion to have second reading or give second reading. I see no discussion or debate, no one in the queue, I will call the question. That carries unanimously. Counselor Blackmore.
I would move that council have third reading of bylaw C1458 at this meeting.
All right, as with the other ones, this must pass unanimously in order for us to have third reading here tonight. Seeing no one in the queue, I'll call the question, please vote. And that does pass unanimously. Counselor Blackmore.
And finally, I move council give third reading to bylaw C1458.
All right, so this is third reading on the bylaw C-1458, the Downtown Business Improvement Area Business Tax Rate bylaw. Counselor Ochoa.
And thank you, Mayor Clayton. Just wanted to let everybody know that we've been trying to get this so we don't have to do it every year, but the province, the way the legislation is, we have to do this every year. It's, we would like to streamline it so it's good for 10 years or something like that, but I've been on council 12 years, and it's been, it's just the 12th time I've done it. So there you go. Thank you.
All right, no one else in the queue, I'll call the question. And that carries unanimously. Thank you for that work, Counselor Blackmore, any highlights from your meeting? And we'll wait a minute for Counselor Bosch to come back. My apologies.
The tax sale that was scheduled for March 17th has been canceled as arrangements have been made with the property owners, and of course, March 17th is in the past already. The deadline for assessment appeals is tomorrow, April 3rd. So if you have an appeal and haven't filed it yet, your time is running out. Administration is still working closely with our auditors to finalize year-end financial statements, which should be ready fairly soon. Procurement, of course, is busy working with all city departments to fill capital projects, and the surplus and salvage stage of the leisure center demolition is in preparation now and should start shortly.
Perfect, thanks for that update. Moving on to item 7.4, the Operation, Operational Services Committee, and I will look to Counselor Bosch for introduction.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I move that council adopt the minutes of the Operational Services Committee meeting held March 28th, 2023, as presented.
That motion is in order. I'll call the question. And that carries unanimously. Some highlights from your meeting, Counselor Bosch.
Okay. Hang on here, I'm going to get back on this. Okay. Basically, Chief Glavine, Operating Services Officer, is, has given us just updates on everything that's coming about here this spring in regards to RFPs and improvements on the roads. So the RFP for the solar design at the Design Works was awarded, happy to see that. The social media campaign for not feeding wildlife has been launched. The tender for Phase 3 of Road Rehab Program has been posted, and that's between 68th Avenue and Westbound Lanes between Kateri Drive and Knowledge Way. Tender for South Bear Creek Ball Diamond Lighting Replacement has gone out. City is also seeking feedback on future improvements for two intersections, 108th Street and 100 Ave, and 100th Street and 116th Ave. That has already gone through as far as feedback held at the Muscati Pavilion. Was there more, or just that is done? It's done now? Okay. East Link Sound Attention Project has been awarded, just to get some of that noise reduction done at East Link for, for the people who live near there. And again, the last is engagement with businesses along 100 Ave will begin this week, or, that was two weeks, last week, in the week planning for installation of tree groves between 112th Street and 116th Street as part of the urban forest capital work. So just getting spring and summer projects off on a go here, so that's all I have for my report, thank you.
Thanks for that. I just wanted to clarify something for those who may be watching, Counselor, or sorry, Chief Glavine, the sound attenuation is the indoor project, correct?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton, that's correct, that's in the aquatics area.
Thank you, just wanted to clarify that. All right, thanks for the highlights, Counselor Bosch. Moving on to item 7.5, the Invest GP Committee meeting of March 28th, and I think Counselor Blackmore stepped in on that one.
Yes, I would move council adopt the minutes of the Invest GP Committee meeting held March 28th.
That motion is in order. Seeing no one in the queue, I'll call the question. That carries unanimously. Counselor Blackmore.
We do, we were expecting to make a motion to rescind Policy 316 and reallocate the, those funds that are in the downtown incentive program, however, we are instead going to postpone that, and I don't know how that, if we need both motions or just the motion to postpone.
Just the motion to postpone.
I would move that we postpone matters concerning Policy 316.
Sure. So, so the motion is to postpone the discussion on rescinding Policy 3, Policy 316, that will come to a future council meeting, a discussion or debate on the motion. Seeing none, I'll call the question. And that carries unanimously. Highlights from your meeting, please, Counselor Blackmore.
Yes, since the beginning of January, we've had 63 new businesses register in Grand Prairie, which I think is pretty awesome. We also see lots of activity at the rural renewal streams with 164 endorsed candidates, 247 approved employer applications with 36 in progress, and a total of 552 posted vacancies. The last number seems to grow bigger all the time. Economic Recovery Committee has reviewed one local marketing grant, and administration has attended a couple fairly big conferences, the World Petroleum Conference and the World Agricultural Tech, Ag Tech Conference, where they have yielded lots of interest in developing businesses in Grand Prairie. And again, I think we mentioned this earlier, at two months, two weeks ago, but the 2023 Grand Prairie Guide is now available online and in print. If you want a printed copy, you can get one here at City Hall, and I also know they have them at the East Link Center. And finally, you can buy your Stompede tickets at the Bonnet Energy Center box office.
Perfect, and I just had one thing I wanted to highlight from your meeting. I understand there was a discussion around expression of interest in, that has gone out for people who may be interested in building a hospitality facility, a hotel, on the airport lands. Did you have anything you wanted to expand on that?
I have it written down right here, but I didn't tell anyone.
That's all right. Please feel free to expand.
So if there are hotel people out there who are interested in building a hotel and business at the airport, they should contact Invest GP. There is certainly been some expression of interest, and that window of opportunity probably will not be open terribly long.
Perfect, and I will ask our CAO, for people looking for information, it is currently posted on our website, correct?
Yes, Madam Chair, it's on bids and tenders on the city's website, and we encourage people to have a look at it. And if proponents need a little more time with it, it does have a short fuse to get things underway, but if there are interested parties and they need a little bit more time to assimilate their response to it, we're certainly able to accommodate that.
Okay, thank you for that. All right, moving on to item 7.6, the Strategy and Communication Services Committee of March- Moving on to item 7.6, the Strategy and Communication Services Committee of March 28th. And I will look to Counselor Berg for introduction.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I would like to move that council adopt the minutes of the Strategy and Communication Services Committee meeting held March 28th, 2023 as presented.
Perfect. Thank you for that. That motion is in order, seeing no one in the queue with errors or omissions. I'll call the question. Please vote. And that carries unanimously. Counselor Berg, you have a little bit of business there.
Yes, I would like to move that council give first reading to bylaw C-1057A, being a bylaw to repeal the regulate late night club events in the city bylaw. And just speaking to this, this is part of cleaning up a number of bylaws that are either outdated or redundant. And in our committee meetings, we found out that this is one that is redundant. We are still concerned about late night clubs and events, but looking at other bylaws that exist and other laws that exist, these topics are already covered. So if I could move that?
That would be great. So this motion is to give first reading to the bylaw C-157A. I'll call the question. As there's no discussion or debate on first reading, please vote. And that carries unanimously. Counselor Berg.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I would like to move council give second reading to bylaw C-1057A.
That motion is in order. Seeing anybody in the queue for discussion or debate on second reading. Seeing no one, I'll call the question. Please vote. And that carries unanimously. Counselor Berg.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I would like to move council have third reading of bylaw C-1057A at this meeting.
That motion is in order. And as with the other bylaw work that we did tonight, this motion must pass unanimously in order for us to have third reading here tonight. I will call the question. Please vote. That carries unanimously. Counselor Berg.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I would like to move council give third reading to bylaw C-1057A, being a bylaw to repeal the regulate late night club events in the city bylaw.
Thank you for that. That motion is in order. I will call the question. Vote. And that carries unanimously. You have another item of business, Counselor.
I do. I would like to move council give first reading to bylaw C-1395K, being an amendment to the fees, rates, and charges bylaw. And speaking to this, there were some fines and some different fees associated with the previous bylaw. So with us repealing that bylaw, we need to remove the fees and fines associated with that from this bylaw.
Perfect. So that motion is in order. This is first reading, so no discussion or debate. Please vote. That carries unanimously. Counselor Berg.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I would like to move council give second reading to bylaw C-1395K.
That motion is in order. An opportunity for discussion or debate. Seeing no one in the queue, I'll call the question. That carries unanimously. Counselor Berg.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I would like to move council have third reading of bylaw C-1395K at this meeting.
This must pass unanimously. This is in order for us to be able to have third reading here tonight. I'll call the question. Please vote. And that carries unanimously. Counselor Berg.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I would like to move council give third reading to bylaw C-1395K, being an amendment to the fees, rates, and charges bylaw.
That motion is in order. I'll call the question. And that carries unanimously. Any highlights from your meeting, Counselor Berg?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Clayton. We are currently scanning, is underway to assist various departments for work being done on the police service transition. Administration is updating flag protocol, including assisting with indigenous recognition. Intergovernmental affairs, our team is putting together provincial election strategy to be developed on different things that we wish to advocate for to the various parties in the upcoming provincial election. Corporate marketing, surveys for the branding project are out, and will target residents, businesses, city staff, and visitors out of interest. I actually went on and found this survey just to see what all was involved. And basically, we're just looking for feedback from our citizens on how we project our city and what we choose to sell through our citizens in their lived experience. So I think I found it on Facebook, but I'm positive it is also on our city website. And finally, we've got two Northwestern Polytechnic students completing their practicum placements. Each provided 120-hour service to the organization. And that's my highlights.
Thanks for that, Counselor Berg. Moving on, there are no items, of course, on it tonight. Under delegation business, we had one delegation that was here tonight. I will recognize Counsel Bressi.
Great, thank you. I would move that we receive this delegation's presentation for information. I am thankful to both those very busy people for coming and giving us a bit of time to make sure we understand their organization's perspective.
Thank you for that. And that motion is in order. I'll call the question. That carries unanimously. So we have no notices of motion tonight. We are now heading into our recess, and we will be back at 6:00 PM. Thanks, everyone.
Good evening and welcome back to the City Council meeting of April 4th, the 4th? Apologies, April 3rd. We are now in our evening portion of the meeting. First on our agenda is delegations. As mentioned earlier today, if you're looking to speak to council, we strongly encourage that. Simply go online. The form is relatively simple. Fill it out and you can either choose the afternoon session or the evening session. Today, we had one delegation let us know that he wished to come to speak to council. I will call Mr. Troy Smith up and once you get here, Mr. Smith, just for those who are watching, if you could introduce yourself, take five minutes, talk to council about what you'd like to speak about and as well, at the end of that, I'll allow council to ask you questions. So come on up. The mic is on and we are ready to go. Doesn't matter at all. Thanks for coming.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Troy Smith. Thank you for having me here. I first want to start off by saying the topic that I wish to discuss may be sensitive for anybody that may be viewing online or any of the people that are here. My intention is not to upset anybody. My intention is not to take away the seriousness of any of the reports. So the reason for my inquiry today is I've moved out here. I've been in a couple of different provinces. I'm a commercial driver. I've driven school bus. I've driven the small school buses. I've driven the large school buses in different provinces and my children have been on the school buses. And we moved out here in August of 2022 and the first day of having my children on the bus, we were kind of across the street in our parking lot and my children came off the bus and I noticed that the school bus didn't have its four-way flashers on. It didn't have any amber lights on and it didn't have its alternating red lights or the stop arm out, which to me was very concerning because my kids had previously been in different provinces, jurisdictions that use all these devices that are manufactured from the plant these ways for particular reasons of safety in mind. And that got me, you know, calling around and obviously I called the school board. I called first student and I basically tore a strip off of them, asking them what was going on. Come to find out that it was a city bylaw to not allow the school buses in town to use their activated lights. With that being said, I had made a couple emails. I had been sent the use of flashing lights and stop arms for school buses technical report from the city of Calgary dated May of 2014. That was provided to me by the city. Also some other literature, the administrative report and stuff like that. I've gone through it. I've also made some inquiries to the peace officers branch here in Grand Prairie. And when I went to them, they kind of steered me in the right direction but weren't 100% sure where to steer me. They then referred me out to the county as the county peace officers would be more the ones to write tickets out in the county, which therefore got me thinking of a couple things. I've read through these articles and in Alberta, the pedestrian has the right of way regardless from my understanding and my interpretation of things and I could be wrong, but that's the way I interpret reading this. Under the use of highway and rules of the road regulations under sections 72, 73, and 74, all deals with the alternating flashing red lights, rules of the road. I have also driven 26 states. I have driven commercially across every province in Canada except for the territories north of us. And I'm sorry, but a school bus with alternating amber lights or flashing red lights and a stop arm out is universal and every place that I have been, it means stop. I've listened to a few of the city council meetings and stuff that you guys have been discussing and under everything and usually one of the key highlights that at least one councillor or mayor is saying is we've got to do our due diligence. And I'm under the belief that doing our due diligence is using these school buses for what they're designed for. School bus manufacturers have built these buses due to specs and regulations that are set out, to my understanding, under the, what's it called? Something similar to that, yeah, like under the motor vehicle or whatever. But these are set out, you know, regulations, no different than a car being manufactured with ABS and seat belts and stuff like that. Why? Because that is part of the law. I know, for example, myself, when I am driving a bus, when I was driving a bus in Ontario, you know, whether we were in the city, we were in the country, wherever we are, we're coming up to a stop to disembark or embark kids, we would activate our amber lights and then we would slow down, obviously. We would stop. We would activate our red lights by clicking a button on the door handle, which would then alternate our red to ambers and it would also have our red stop arm come out. Now, me as a driver and any driver that is in Ontario, that's a commercial driver of a school bus, the responsibility to fully open our doors, which when the doors are fully opened, what it does is on most school buses, it actually has an arm on the front of that bus. And what that will do is that arm then swings kind of in a 90-degree angle to go straight out from the bus. What this does is it also mitigates the blindness of pedestrians crossing to get to the school bus. It also gives a better sightline to drivers that are driving so that they can see the kids either entering or exiting the school bus. I do know in Ontario, they have a rule that we weren't allowed to activate our ambers or alternating red lights within 100 meters of a stoplight. Why? For traffic congestion. I'm very, very sad to see that in these reports that there have been fatalities. I'm very sorry to hear that. I do not want to see any more fatalities. My concern is we have all these different children coming from all over, everywhere in the world, like, you know, Canada, the United States, you know, further Europe, stuff like that. They do use these school bus lights. Even when I was down in Edmonton, driving Edmonton Transit, the school buses in the city use their stoplights. Just a few things to consider. I do know in Ontario, and I talk about Ontario because I also see that in the references that was provided to me by the city, that you guys consulted Ontario and looked under the Highway Traffic Act in Ontario. So, you know, just a little bit of Ontario stuff. They did make it part of their rules that at the schools, because what they were finding is come disembarkment time or, you know, the let out of school loading the buses, what they were finding is these buses were activated because that's what we had to do when you're loading and unloading passengers is you had to activate your lights. So what they actually did is they came into play and what they did is they made loading and unloading zones for the buses. Now, if the bus was in that zone, okay, you did not have to activate your lights. And it was usually at the school, at a designated area where there was less traffic on the road so that the kids could, you know, and they weren't tying up traffic. I've heard, you know, since my inquiries, I've heard different things coming across through the community of, you know, we were concerned about having people late for work and we were concerned about the stopping of traffic and stuff like this. I'm sorry, but I have to say, is a child's life worth somebody waiting five minutes for a school bus to load or unload? And if that's the case and you're going to be late while you're an adult, maybe you should get up a few minutes earlier and get yourself off to work properly on time, just like the rest of society has to do. My whole intent into this is to have city council relook everything on this and either abolish the, sorry, I don't have the exact bylaw number for the city of Grand Prairie on me. It's somewhere in these reports. But I would be looking to either abolish that bylaw or, you know, have city council amend it. Somewhere also in the, in the technical report, I think it is, or one of the reports, it was saying that one of the cities listed in these reports, they actually made it a rule where if you were passing a school bus and it didn't have its lights on, you had to slow down to a certain speed limit. Like I said, these kids have their minds preoccupied when they're coming home. Their minds are not thinking about, oh, you know what, I've got to look for traffic. Yes. You know, we have to do our due diligence as their parents and as city council and everything else like this to make sure that they're safe. But if the school buses come equipped with these safety features, why is somebody said, sorry, we don't think we need to use these safety features? It's no, in my opinion, it's no different than a car. You know, we have traffic lights out in the city. Why do we have traffic lights out in the city? To control the flow of traffic and to allow pedestrians to cross at some of these intersections. No different than a school bus. And I would just like to, like I said, see that city council put some consideration into this again and possibly look at either demolishing that bylaw or amending it to allow the use, as I was saying to one person, you know, I'm new coming into the county in the city of Grand Prairie and I'm out in the county and lo and behold, I see a school bus. It's got its lights on. I stop, you know, the traffic behind me stops. I come into the city and I see a school bus and there's no lights on. I stop because that's what I'm used to in my province or where I come from. Somebody comes up from behind me, rear ends me, and now you've got a fatality on your hand. Why? Because there's too many inconsistencies. And that would conclude kind of what I'm hoping.
Okay. Well, I appreciate your presentation. I will now open it up to council. They'll have questions regarding the presentation. I remind council that if your questions are on the policy or administrative of nature, we'll save that till the delegation portion of our meeting tonight. But I'll open it up to council for questions of Mr. Smith. Counselor Bressi.
Great. Well, thank you for coming in and raising this. Definitely really appreciate it. And I know that it comes up in the community every once in a while and there's, I've definitely heard residents say, hey, we can't do this because of traffic flow, but I've personally never heard anybody associated with the city. So whether elected official or administration say, hey, we're more concerned about traffic flow than, than kid safety. But for me, it's very, very excited to talk about, are we doing what's safest for kids or not? Because that should be the priority. Absolutely agree with you there. I'm trying to figure out, wait, so you've got a typical residential block where it's not that long a block. You've got a school bus dropping kids off on the block. Are you, I'm trying to figure out what you're suggesting should happen at that block. Is it the bus drops kids off mid-block, turns on its flashers? And they cross mid-block? Is it the bus gets really close to the intersection and they cross at the intersection? Just what's the procedure you're picturing looking like on a typical residential road?
So I can speak from experience for myself. I do know that in times where I was driving, no different than out here. You know, you've got kindergarten kids that are four years old, five years old. You know, I look at the flip side of this. What do you do for these day home providers that are watching three or four or five kids that are tagging these kids along, right? Now they've got to walk them out to the bus, whether it be minus 40, minus 50, to pick up little Johnny who's getting off the bus. And now because, you know, the city may be concerned about creating a crossing mid-block or whatever, because it does say, you know, go to the intersection or whatever. Now you've got this day home provider who's toting around five kids, you know, one may be five years old and the rest may all be under the school age. And now they're trying to drape through all this snow and ice and everything else like that. In my opinion, you're creating more of a safety hazard than if you had the bus stop for, you know, three minutes mid-block, put the lights out, let the kids cross because that day home provider might be over here on this side of the street and the bus stops here. Well, if they only have to come out to here, now you're not creating any more of a hazard because now this particular day home provider or single mother or whatever may have to walk 500, you know, meters to get to the intersection, to cross, to walk another 500 meters up to get, you know, little Johnny off the bus and then do the same. And now, in my opinion, now you're creating a bigger hazard and a bigger risk assessment because now you've got more pedestrians that could be out slipping on ice, slipping on the snow, whatever. And it, it really does make it hard. You know, and I presented to my, my own kids when I saw this and I said, guys, why didn't you even look? Well, we're used to getting off the bus dad with the school lights, you know, going and vehicles stopping. I said, you guys didn't even so much as look. So yes, I came down on my kids and said, listen, like, you know, and then once I started doing more inquiries, I found out, okay, well, no, when you get off that school bus, your head has to be in the game and you have to make sure that you're looking. But out here in Grand Prairie, they have nothing to give themselves that distance. So a kid could potentially get off that bus and walk right in front of the bumper and walk out. And yeah, guess what? You could have a fatality. Why? Because nothing is happening. You know, the bus is pulled over, no ambers, no four-ways, no lights. And it's, it's, it's just a matter of time. And I think that this bylaw is highly disregarding the due diligence of the safety of the children.
Good.
Could I ask a follow-up?
Sure.
Yeah, and I totally get what you're saying when you're, when you're on a block where there's, if there's a 500-meter walk, I totally, I totally get, get that. I would note that our bylaw in our rural areas of the city does allow lights to be used in those non-traditional urban areas. But I've got a school bus stop on my block and there's six houses on the entire block. So they're walking three houses up, three houses down. On a situation like that, are you suggesting that we create mid-block crossings there or that in a situation like that, they still cross to the intersection? What's?
Yeah, like the school bus is designed to have these safety features, right? So that kids, we can keep the kids the safest that we can. You know, a lot of municipalities, a lot of provinces that I've lived in, they want to do, you know, the safest thing for the kids and to not have, you know, potential five-year-olds and six-year-old kindergarten kids walking a great distance. That's why I think a lot of, a lot of provinces and a lot of municipalities and districts have that stop mid-block, right, is to prevent that and to mitigate the risk of anything potentially happening. You know, you taking, you're saying, okay, if there's an intersection 300, 400 kilo, or, you know, meters up the road. Let's play devil's advocate on this, you know, yes, we're in Grand Prairie, but let's take, we're in a larger city where, you know, we've got bad people out there. Somebody wants to take that child. Guess what? The driver's now sitting in their seat. Moms, you know, 600, 700 meters up the road, you know, because they have to go up and cross the road and somebody comes and grabs that kid. Well, now what? Now whose responsibility is that, right? Because now we've just made it further for that child to go and cross or, you know, whatever. But yes, I do suggest that, you know, mid-block crossings, especially when it comes to school time, it shouldn't even, it shouldn't even be a question in people's minds. You know, the school bus is there. It stopped. We got to stop. Yes, am I going to say everybody stops for that bus? No. But part of the onus also comes on to the driver. And anybody that's in driving school bus does it because they, you know, they enjoy it. They enjoy being around the kids, you know, it works with their schedule. So a lot of these are single moms, single dads, you know, driving or retired. So they're out there to make a little bit of extra money, but I can guarantee you, every bus driver that I've come across, the number one thing is the children's safety. You.
Any comments, Counselor Bressi, Counselor Blackmore?
Thanks for coming and raising this issue. Have you driven bus in Grand Prairie?
Not in Grand Prairie, no, not yet.
I'm asking because I think I have to direct my questions actually to administration. So I'll wait for that time in the agenda. But I'm sympathetic and I'm a little puzzled by some of the changes that I've seen. So, thanks.
Counselor Bosch.
Thank you for coming, Mr. Smith. Yeah, thanks for bringing this to our attention. It's not something that, unless it's, you know, coming from a different province like you, like you have, where it's blatantly obvious, you know, you learn to live with what's, what's around you typically, right? You don't, I drive by a school every single day and I've never seen an issue. But I was, I often see parents walking their kids and I'm an advocate for that. I don't, I rather not see parents let their kids go, you know, 600 meters and walk on their own, especially if they're little like that. So that I still, I mean, it may be old-fashioned belief, but I walked my kids, so I certainly would expect others to as well. But bringing this to our attention and for us to check the processes, I think is a really good thing you've done here. And I'm looking forward to seeing what, what and why these bylaws are written as they are.
Thanks for that, Counselor O'Toole.
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. Thank you for coming here tonight. I appreciate that. And I was wondering if you had contacted the school boards at all? If you did, what did they happen to say?
I haven't contacted the school board per se. I, like I said, I did originally when this first happened, I did call First Student, who is the school bus, one of the school bus providers out here. And I had a meeting or telephone call with their manager and I basically just asked them what gives with this and why they're not allowed to use the stoplights. And I was referred to, it's the city of Grand Prairie, they've made a bylaw and we're not allowed to use our lights. And I was like, okay. Now, I have seen in other municipalities to the north of us that deal with rural and city, the use of their strobe lights, for example. Okay, being out in the rural, you could use your strobe lights, but as soon as you got into city corporate limits, you couldn't because it caused somebody to have epilepsy that lived in that area where the school buses were going by. That's totally understandable. But this here, you get a school bus driver, for example, if I'm driving school bus in the city, right, I've got to remember, oh, I'm in the city, I can't use my lights. But tomorrow I could be doing a relief out in the county and, and, you know, I'm out there and I forget to use my lights because, well, that's what I've been doing for the last week or whatever, right? And everybody's referred me back to the bylaw that was put into place here in the city of Grand Prairie.
Thank you very much for bringing this up to our attention. I remember dealing with it a number of years ago and where it looks like we may be dealing with it again. Thank you.
All right. Well, that is all I have for comments from council, so I appreciate you coming today. Please stick around if you'd like. If not, we deal with the delegation business after the public hearings. So you're more than welcome to stick around to hear the conversation. Otherwise, someone from administration will follow up with you to let you know how, how the conversation went with council.
I'll be around.
Thank you. Thanks for coming. So moving on the agenda, no unfinished business, no, we will move right into public hearings. Item 14.1, Land Use Bylaw Amendment C-1260-165. I'll call this public hearing to order and turn it to a introduction from administration. Just give me one second here. And Mr. Babalolo, whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. This is our LGB amendment that addresses development permit application process and some housekeeping items. So the purpose of this is to improve the clarity of the land use bylaw, to correct some typos and omissions and also to ensure that the bylaw is consistent with other planning documents. I will quickly highlight some of the revisions contained in this proposed bylaw amendment. So for, in the definition section, which is section 10, the definition for dispatch office has been revised to office has been revised to remove the constraint or to the operation of taxi services and also to allow for some, to allow for more coverage of the dispatch services. Also, the definition for personal services has been revised to include massage therapy by a satisfied massage therapist. And the definition for personal care facility has been deleted in this proposed bylaw. This is because it is redundant to personal service facility. And the purpose of this is to improve the clarity for these sections. We also revised it, section 17 of the land use bylaw, which is concerned with the regulations surrounding the application for development permit. This amendment, we allow the development permit application to be submitted electronically and also clarify other documents that are required to be submitted with the application. It also corrects the number of days required by the development authority to deem an application complete. So what we've done here is to tie the land use bylaw requirement to the process that is, that is outlined in the MGA, so that in later days, when or if they change the MGA, we may not necessarily have to amend the bylaw to comply. Under section 17, under section 57.1, currently it states that, so, okay, sorry, section 57.1 addresses the secondary suits requirements. So currently we have stating that secondary suits will be allowed on a lot with a minimum width of 11 or 12.2 meters, depending on whether there is a lane access or not. This amendment revises this section to emphasize that the secondary suit will only be allowed within single detached dwellings on a lot with the specified minimum lot width. So it doesn't matter whether the lot size is big or small. If it is not a single detached dwelling, we will not allow secondary suits within it. Within section 91, which is Central Commercial District, this amendment removes the qualifier for apartment, for apartment building. That is, under the uses, we have apartment building listed and in bracket it says minimum 24 units and three stories. So we removed that minimum 24 units and three stories from this section and add it to 91.5G under other requirements. We are doing this so that the development authority may have the power to exercise the variance on the number of units allowed within the, or allowed in the apartment building if required. This is because according to the MGA in section 60, in section 646B, you cannot apply variance on the use, but you can apply it on other requirements of the district. The revision to section 102.1 has been, section 102.1 has been modified to add the word development to the post of the section. So currently we have it to read that the purpose of this section is to protect land intended for future urban from premature subdivision, but the word development is missing and that is what this amendment is adding to it. So now it will read to protect land intended for future development, for, uh, future urban development from premature subdivision and development. And finally, this amendment, we had dispatch office to all the districts where we already have office minor listed as a use because of their similarity. And in closing, administration recommends that council gives three readings to the bylaw, C1260, being an amendment to the land use bylaw. Thank you, and I'm open to questions.
Great. Thank you for that. Appreciate that introduction. We'll now off, open it up to council for questions of administration. Council Berg?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Clayton. So Mr. Babalola, I'm just wanna, it's a generalized question. We approved narrower lots up in Kings Gate in the northeast part of the city. Does this negatively impact any of the decisions that we've made there?
Uh, I wouldn't say it impacts it because the Kings Gate is, sorry, did you say Kings Gate or Ketchikan? Kings Gate. So it, it shouldn't impact it.
Sorry?
I, I don't think it will impact it.
Okay.
You're talking about the secondary suits though, right?
Yeah, we, we approved narrower lots, but longer lots, where they could potentially have the main house and then a garage in the back alley with a suite above it.
Yeah, it won't impact it, no.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Council Plot.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. There's been lots to talk about secondary suites, so I just, my question's just more of, I just want to make sure we consulted with industry on this and they're comfortable with changes potentially on how this would, could impact them. It doesn't sound like it should have a lot of impact, but I just want to make sure we've actually reached out to them.
Mr. Babalola?
Through the mayor. So this is not a new, we are not having anything new here. It's all been the practice, but the only thing is, people kind of tend to misunderstand this to be that once the lot is big, it doesn't matter the development on the lot, we can put a secondary suit in it. But from practice, what we've been doing is allowing secondary suits in single detached developments.
I, I think I understand, I'm just, I just want to make sure that we've consulted with industry on this change and if, and if there's no concerns with them, then I'm fine. I just want to make sure we have consulted with them.
Mr. Babalola?
Through the mayor. I believe so that there is no concerns from their side.
Uh, Council, Council Blackmore?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. There, there's mention in your report and on your report on the screen about rewording the definition for dispatch office to remove the constraint to the operation of taxi services. A few months ago, maybe, maybe close to a year ago, we were questioned by a company that was offering driving services, you know, they come get your vehicle and take you and your vehicle home. No, don't drink and drive kind of services. And her concern was that she had to have a physical office here in the city. So I don't think you actually worked here then, so it's a bit of an unfair question, I think, for you. But I'm wondering if this rewording of the definition of dispatch office addresses her concerns in any way.
Mr. Babalola?
Yeah, through the mayor. I believe it will, uh, address their concern because when we look at the definition for dispatch, dispatch is like you are providing a, a process by which you assign a specific worker to kind of provide a service for another worker or people that needs the service. So what we have initially in the bylaw, or currently what we have is that dispatch office is specific to taxis operations. But when we consider other dispatch services, like the one that you have those are kind of identified now, that could be considered as a dispatch because you're asking somebody to go and take somebody that is maybe due to the alcohol level could not drive. So that can be an, they can do that from an office, which we can call it dispatch office. Or say you have a towing services, you want to dispatch towing vehicles to stranded people to get them out.
Some of those dispatch offices, I think her concern was some of them were operating from people's living rooms. And she felt unduly penalized because she, her interpretation was she needed a physical office. And I, I don't know how that ever got addressed, it kind of just disappeared. So I'm wondering if that, the wording of this would make that more clear, what a dispatch office actually is.
Absolutely, through the mayor, absolutely. So that is the essence of like, people like this can have a use that they can say they want to apply for.
Okay. Thank you.
Perfect. So I don't see any other, any other questions for you, Mr. Babalola. I will now go to see if there's anybody here to speak in support of this land use bylaw amendment. There's nobody online that I'm aware of, correct? Okay. So I will ask again if there's anyone else here to, or if there's anyone here to speak in support of this bylaw amendment. I will ask a third time if there's anyone here to speak in support of this land use bylaw amendment. I will now ask if there's anyone here to speak in opposition of the land use bylaw amendment a second time, to see if there's anyone here to speak in opposition to the land use bylaw amendment. And knowing that there's no one online, I will ask a third time in the chambers if there's anyone here to speak in opposition of this land use bylaw amendment. Seeing none, I will close this public hearing and look to business arising. Council Bressi?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I would move that council give first reading to bylaw C1260165, being an amendment to the land use bylaw.
That motion is in order. No discussion or debate on first reading, so I will call the question. Sorry, Council O'Connor? And that carries unanimously. Council Bressi?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I would move that council give second reading to bylaw C1260165, just speak to it. I think these are pretty common sense housekeeping amendments, so I'd encourage council to let them pass tonight.
Perfect. That motion is in order. Open it up for discussion and debate. Council O'Connor?
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. What I was getting clarified, when you read that paragraph, furthermore, this amendment will reword the definition of dispatch office to remove the constraint to the operation of taxi services and allow for more coverage of dispatch services, thereby adding more clarification to the meaning. But it does not identify whether or not it has to be a commercial business. And out of, I think that what Counselor Blackmore brought up is that there were concern that city is saying you have to have a physical business office. And so I'm a little confused and would like some clarification is, I think there should be a change here referring whether or not you can operate out of your home or does it have to be a commercial location? And I don't see it clearly defined here.
So Counselor O'Connor, there's not really an opportunity for administrative questions right now. I would suggest that if you're looking to change something in the bylaw amendment, that you make an amendment to this. Okay? With that, are you looking to make an amendment?
Yes, so I'd like to have the definition and amend this to include where, whether or not it's a requirement for a physical location as a business office and not as an in-house, what do you call it, residential business, a home business.
So unfortunately, this isn't the time for questions for administration. So you can amend the motion as you see fit. We can postpone the motion, you can, or you can vote against it. We've done our administrative time, we've closed the public hearing.
Okay.
We're in business arising.
Okay. So. I don't know if I'm gonna get what I want, but.
I see Council Bressi and then Council Blackmore.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I would just highlight to my colleague that these amendments increase the opportunity for dispatch offices, don't decrease them. So we're, I don't personally have any concerns because we're creating more opportunity for business, not limited in any way.
Counsel Blackmore?
I, I, Mayor Clayton, I, I think I will not agree with Counselor Bressi. I don't feel it's more clear and it doesn't address the worldwide trend towards online or electronic offices that manage taxi and driving services. So therefore, I would like to move that the motion be postponed and more clarity sought on this issue.
Counsel Bressi?
I'm gonna vote against the motion to postpone. My suggestion to my colleagues was let's just have second reading and if you don't think that we've got the information we need to pass it today, then defeat the motion to have third reading today and we can ask more questions when it comes back to us at third reading.
That was gonna be my comment. So basically, exactly that, we'll have a second reading today. If there are people that aren't comfortable with having third reading today because they want more information, it only takes one person to permit third reading from happening tonight, so that would be preferred. So are you fine to rescind that postponement? Motion, Counsel Blackmore?
My colleague beside me says yes.
Okay. All right. So we're still discussion and debate on second reading. Any further discussion or debate on the motion to have second reading? Seeing none, I'll call the question. And that carries unanimously. Counsel Bressi?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. It's not a council meeting if you don't make a losing motion, so I think I know where the winds are going on this one, but I'll make it anyways. I would move that council have third reading of bylaw C1260165 at this meeting.
Perfect. So this is a motion in order for us to be able to have third reading here tonight. It must pass unanimously in order for us to have third reading. I see no one on the queue, so I'll call the question. And that motion is defeated. So we will have third reading at a later date. So we're done with this public hearing for now and I'm gonna move on to delegation business. Counsel Bressi?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I do have a motion I'd like to make. Would you like to make that now or hold it?
Perfect, go for it.
Great. I would move that council direct administration to engage with school bars, to engage with school boards to identify if there are any recommended changes to enhance school bus safety within the city. Just to speak to this, I appreciate.
Sorry, just and bring it back to the appropriate standing committee?
Yeah, sorry. And, yeah, sorry, that's a good catch, yeah. Bring your report back to the appropriate standing committee. Just speak to this. Definitely appreciate when residents raise concerns about safety of, of kids in the community. This is a report, this is a concern that does get brought up to me every, every once in a while, there's, but it's not the only concern that gets brought up to me with school buses. There's also concerns sometimes raised about how do we, how do school bus stops get planned with things like flashing beacons? A big one for me is how do school, how do school buses get planned with windrows in the winter and issues with kids maybe slipping on those windrows? So there's a number of individual residents who sometimes raise concerns with me. But for me, it's really the school boards are the professionals that I, as a parent, trust my kid, the safety of my kids to every day. And so if something's rankling in the school boards, I really want to know about it. It would be great to ask them to talk to their transportation people and drive it through that process, see if there's changes, whether it's about stop signs or anything else with kids. Cause I hate us just to look at one narrow issue if there might be other opportunities for enhancing school bus safety with kids. So I hope the council will support this motion.
So that motion is in order. I'll open it up for discussion and debate on the motion. Counsel Blackmore?
I was hoping for opportunities to ask administration questions, so.
And I was gonna stop breathing, so I didn't get a chance to get that out as well. Yes, if you have questions for administration, now would be appropriate time for that as well.
I'm curious when the bylaw change took place because I realize that, you know, I'm the oldest one at the table, but when, second oldest one at the table, well, maybe third.
And Kevin's in there, I just don't keep.
He's my junior, but. School buses had flashing lights and they had stop signs and they had arms that came down. So I, I have to say, you know, when you don't have kids anymore and you're not meeting a school bus, you miss a lot of that. And I try my very level best not to be out on the streets when school buses are on the street. So there's clearly things that I'm missing, but I truly didn't realize that the reason that I never saw flashing lights anymore was because of a bylaw change. And I, I have to concur with the delegation that this doesn't seem logical when buses come equipped with safety equipment and yet we've chosen a higher authority to decide that they're not necessary. I also, the, the next question I have, since I'm on a roll, I'll keep going.
Actually, if I could just interrupt you. I just asked, questions for administration are gonna help you make a decision on the motion?
Well, I was not really ready for a motion yet, so I don't know that I want to discuss the motion.
This tonight.
I have questions first.
Okay. So keep in mind, Chief Protective Services, Public and Protective Services, Mr. Lemieux, answer the questions if you can. If you rather than wait to come back to standing committee, that's also appropriate.
Yeah, so thank you for the question. So the, the bylaw was amended with a particular change on March 21st, 2016. So the, the change at that time basically said that the operator of a vehicle bearing the signed school bus may activate flashing, flashing red or yellow lights or the stop arm on any highway within the city where the designated speed limit is or exceeds 80 kilometers an hour, first condition. The second one is they could also activate flashing red and yellow lights while loading or unloading passengers on a roadway where there is no curb or gutter present on both sides of the road. So it's not accurate when we say you can't activate your. we say you can't activate your lights within the municipal boundaries. You can, but only under those two conditions. That change happened in 2016, along with an admin report that the, Mr. Smith discussed. So it was in 2016.
And before then, they used lights, stop signs, and arms. I guess, I don't know if you know the answer. I just remember a school bus driver that I worked with going to court for those very things because people weren't stopping.
So I can't speak to what was in place before that. I'd have to research that.
Counsel O'Connor. Sorry, Counsel Blackmore, do you have a follow up or something different? I got a full queue here.
I will actually wait for the motion.
Okay, perfect. Counsel O'Connor.
Yes, I have, also have concerns about this and would like to know, I couldn't open my access to read the bylaw, so it'd be interesting to take a look at that. So I'd like to see that we get the appropriate information of why the change was made and is someone misinterpreting this. So that's my point.
Counsel Berg.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I was about to turn my button off, but simple request, can we get a copy of that bylaw? Because I tried finding it on the city website and it wasn't coming up, so.
Absolutely. It's a traffic bylaw, bylaw C 1166, and I'll circulate a link.
Thank you.
Mr. Lemieux. Counsel Bosch.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Mr. Lemieux, can you just, you said the other condition was if there was not a curb and gutter?
That's correct. So basically, in, for example, newly annexed areas that are undeveloped, those do not have curb and gutter. So the use of the flashing lights in those areas is allowed.
And why wouldn't it be allowed when there is curb and gutter?
Mr. Lemieux.
So the principle, and I'm referring back to a report that was done for council in 2016, so the information may be a little bit dated. So certainly, we did an environmental scan, and in Western Canada, municipalities are divided. But many municipalities in Saskatchewan and Alberta do not allow the use of those lights and the arm within municipal boundaries. The principle there, and you could argue, but the principle is that we encourage kids to use the mid-block crosswalks, the official mid-block crosswalks, or the controlled intersections where the lights are. The argument is that when you use your arm mid-block, you're creating a temporary crosswalk, if we can call it. And like the, Mr. Smith indicated, it's even though the lights are flashing, not every vehicle stops. So that creates a hazard. So again, the data that I have here is from 2016, so it's, it's a bit dated. It might warrant a review. But that's my answer to your question.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So I, would you like to close, Counsel Bressi? I see no one else in the queue.
Sure, yeah. I would encourage council to support this motion. Personally, I'm, based on the data, I know I'm pretty comfortable with our current policy, because for me, we engineer intersections to have really good visibility for drivers, see kids there. And I'm personally uncomfortable with what I know on asking kids to move mid-block where there might be parked cars, there might be boulevard planters, there might be things that limit visibility. But it's also, what do I know? I'm just a guy in the community in some regards. I, I do know that our school boards take kids' safety very seriously. And so that's why this motion is to start, is to ask administration to engage with our school boards, because they've got professionals who I'm sure are up to date on how to keep their kids safe getting to and from schools. And again, a, kids' safety coming to school is paramount to me. And so that's why this motion isn't just looking at stop signs. It's also looking at if there's opportunities for slow removal, or opportunity for the way we're engineering our roads, anything at all that, if there's something burning in school boards' professionals' minds about things we should be aware of for kids' safety, I sure want those brought to us, because it's a parent's worst nightmare, is you send your kid to school and you don't see that kid again. And I take kids' safety very seriously, want to make sure we have the best possible policies to protect our youngest residents.
Okay. That's Counsel Bressi's close on the motion. I'll call the question. That carries unanimously. I will ask council if there's any other business arising from the delegation. Counsel Blackmore.
I don't think this needs to be part of the motion, but as direction to administration, I don't think that we should restrain ourselves by only talking to school boards, as is indicated in the motion. We need to be talking to the full spectrum of services provided to students in the community. And I, I don't really see using your flashing lights as being something that indicates a mid-block crossing. You can do the same. I just don't understand that. But I will wait for some follow-up from administration.
All right. Counsel Bosch, you have some business arising?
No, just to add on to Counsel Blackmore's comments, because that's what my comments were going to be. I'd like to see, you know, our own traffic engineers involved in this too, and experts, only because I don't want to just put this onus strictly on the school boards. I don't think that's fair. We have a responsibility ourselves as a city. So I think a collaborated approach into investigating what the best policies and procedures are moving forward. Thank you.
Counsel Bressi.
Great, thank you. Yeah, I just want to clarify my, and my intent of the motion I just made is, in my mind, when we engage with people, that means we're having a conversation with them and we're working on finding solutions with them. So my intent of that motion that council just passed wasn't, hey, city, check in with school boards, and if they say we're all good, just assume we're all good. Or if they say, hey, you need to make this change, say, hey, we need to make that change. When I say engage, I really mean, hey, have a, have a conversation with our school boards and, and a two-way conver, conversation. And I'd also note that there's nothing in that motion that limits administration. If they feel other people need to be brought in, still have great advice for us if they want to provide advice specific to school bus stop arms that they can't do, can't do that. So just want to clarify a bit of the intent of that motion.
Well, when we were discussing and debating that, you could have amended it. All right. So that is our delegation business. I'm going to now move to council member reports. And I'm going to start with Counsel Plot, since you looked at me first. Keep your head down.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. Lesson learned. So I guess for the last few weeks, was in AB Munis last week with some council colleagues for several days, had one external committee meeting with the Nighthawk, with Nighthawk, sorry. So just a couple highlights there. The hill is officially closed for the year now. April 2nd was our last day. Took us most of the year to get insurance figured out, but we had a pretty dramatic increase in our insurance premiums for the, for the hill, and hopefully something that we can see if we can get under control for next year, went up almost $100,000. So first indications is that sadly, we might be a little bit in the red this year with the hill, but a lot of it is to do with that big insurance bump that just wasn't anticipated. We have had bear still coming out. There's, you won't see the map, but they're actually doing some de-watering walls, and they're doing, and they're evaluating these walls. So their next instrument readings could be April 17th. They're doing this on a monitoring basis just to see if there is any more slopage or any more sloughing going on on the hill, just to see where it's at. So they've had bear still out there several times on that. And so work is still being done just to see where the hill is at as far as slope mitigation and how that's going to look moving forward. And other than that, attended several other events with council colleagues last week. I guess the other one I'll highlight was the Race-Based Hate that we did at the museum. There's several of councils here, and I thought that was actually quite well received. And for me, we do, we do a lot of talk about that, but it was a good eye-opener, just talking to a few of the community members in that room as well, that there's always still more to work to be done in that area.
Thanks for that. Counsel Blackmore.
I was not looking at you.
I know.
I attended Peace Health Advisory Council, on behalf of Peace Health Advisory Council, I attended a Growing Your Own Healthcare Professionals webinar with AHS. I think a number of people were on that call, 80 or some. Interestingly enough, a number of the things that we are doing here in Grand Prairie were showcased on, as, as positive ways to grow your own healthcare professionals. I also attended a downtown association board meeting. One of the topics there that we, we talked about for quite a while was actually the council decision to move to municipal policing. A lot of the business owners at that table were interested in why that change took place and were quite supportive. I attended the Chamber of Commerce post-budget discussions with Minister Taves, listened to people in the room, and I am sad that we're not going to get to hear any more of those from Minister Taves. I attended the South Peace Archives Annual General Meeting, and the presentation that took place for, at that meeting was, you know, we make the claim often that Grand Prairie has more entrepreneurial than any other region. And no one ever defines region or how many entrepreneurial that, that actually includes. And the research that's being down on it is actually not really in, not really finding that there's much truth to that statement. We're pretty much average, guys. Sorry. And finally, I attended the TARP sale on April 1st at Evergreen Park, and I left before the kissing started. So I know when to leave the room. That concludes my report.
Thanks for that. Counsel Bressi.
Great, thank you, Mayor Clayton. Two events I'll highlight is, I got to attend the last Youth Advisory Council meeting. We had them here in council chambers, so I got to do a 10-minute orientation on, here's what chambers is about, here's how council works through decision-making. That was fun. Also, I don't know if it was our fault or not, but test alarm went off in the City Hall lobby, and I had to call CAO Nicolay on Sunday evening to get people down here to address it. So if that was us, my apologies, and thank you to our staff that came. But it was, they really enjoyed sitting around the horseshoe and getting to use the voting system. And it's always funny when you bring kids in and they go on the camera for the first time, and you see them jump. And that was fun. Also had some great conversations about, Sunrise House came in and talked to them about youth homelessness and the services that they offer. There was, Road Rack came in and talked to YA, to the Youth Advisory Council about Waste Partner for Walk for Water. So that was good. Had a long conversation about youth transit, and I know they're going to be excited to hear that we approved the free rides for kids 17 and under. I also have a hunch that they're going to be coming back to us sometime in the future saying, hey, you should increase, that's 24. But that's a conversation for another day. So that was great. The other thing I'll, I'll mention is, a number of us attended Alberta municipalities. We had a one and a half day president summit where, as part of our Future of Municipal Governance Project at Alberta Munis, we were talking about how to enhance intermunicipal collaboration in the province. And I really appreciated some talks with colleagues about things we could do as an internal team to have better relationships in the region. Also know as an Alberta municipalities board member that there's going to be some good recommendations coming to our board out of that, of things we can advocate for, or toolkits we can create, or ways we can help our members work with each other and work with our RMA members a little bit better. And then after that, we had a day of the Spring Municipal Leaders' Caucus, where we voted on requests for decisions to, for the boards to take marching orders on what to advocate for. We heard from Premier Smith and MLA Notley about their visions for the province, got to ask them a couple of questions. And we also launched Alberta Munis' election strategy. And if any councillors weren't at Spring Summit and you want to see it, got a little handout with what we're going to be talking about in the election. But the motto that we're encouraging members to use throughout the election is, think Alberta, vote local. And we want to help the councils that are our members, as well as the residents, to ask our, to do a really good job asking candidates, who has the plan for community healthcare, who has the plan for community building, and who has the plan for community safety? So safety, community building, healthcare are the big priorities we're hearing from our members. And we want to make sure that they're on the radar of everybody running to serve in the next legislature. So again, I'm happy to give you a packet of the election readiness if any of you want it.
Thanks for that. Counsel Bressi. Counsel O'Connor.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I attended six different events, the first one being RMA. I really enjoy the connections that we make with our county council members and various members throughout the whole province. I think it's a great opportunity. And I just love the bear pit, when they throw questions at government and the appropriate answers that came back. Attended the post-budget with MLA Taves. I talked to him before he spoke, did not realize he had stepped down that day, so I felt about that big. So anyway, three, went to the Rising Above event, and they raised, was it 540, 292,000? So they did a wonderful job. And they had sold out at 550, two months ago, so they opened it up to another 200 and some people, and they sold that out. So congratulations to them. And went to AB Munis, really enjoyed all the sessions that were there at AB Munis. And, and then attended the TARP sale, and really enjoyed that conversation. And then went to the Fiddler's Jamboree, and that was just awesome. So we have great talent in this area. So kudos. Thank you. That's my report.
Counsel O'Toole.
I, let me just get back to where the list is. I attended the, I actually made, read the proclamation for the Race-Based Hate International Day for elimination of racial discrimination. And thank you for hosting this through the CSD department here in the city. I also attended Northwest Polytech later that night and made another proclamation for the, the First Nations Manti groups, and there was lots of entertainment, and it was a great event. The same day, I also went and did a studio interview for the promotion of the Fiddler's Jamboree. And I also went to the event on this weekend, yesterday. I asked the question, because it was getting pretty darn full in there, and they said that there was 487 tickets sold. So that's, I'm not sure if that's past capacity or not, but there was no tickets left at the tower. And I also attended during that, the period, Nighthawk Sponsorship Appreciation Night. And we actually spent some time, Tolan and Wade here, councillor, and we talked to the operator for quite a long time on ideas that they may be able to enhance the programs out there and make things, new ones pop up. And also, I went to the Filipino Basketball Association Awards Night on Saturday. And it's amazing how good those guys play basketball. I'm not a basketball fan, but I went to a few of their games, and you know, I'm starting to like the ambition, the speed, and the skill set. And over in the Philippines, that's one of their national sports, believe it or not. So with that, that is my report. Thank you so much.
Thanks for that. Counsel Berg.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Clayton. For Grand Prairie Regional Tourism, I attended a Zoom call and listened to a presentation from Explore Northwest Alberta. It's a group that's working with Grand Prairie Regional Tourism to elevate our, our visual presence on a provincial, national, and global scale. Attended the Rising Above fundraiser. They do some amazing work here in town. They do a six-month residential treatment program. They're looking to expand their services and rooms to help those that are suffering from mental health and addiction issues. Particularly want to give a shout out to the city's own Rory Tarrant. Rory is our Director of Intergovernmental Affairs, but he is also the Chairman of Rising Above. So hats off to Rory and his team. It was a wonderful, successful event, and it's great to see the, how the community supports that. And then finally, I did two road trips this past week down to Alberta Munis, and the week prior to that was Rural Municipalities Association Spring Meeting. The highlight, 18 hours in a vehicle with Mike O'Connor. So I think we could make a mini-series documentary around that.
I'll be going to go to heaven now.
Lots of stories. Sorry, Counsel O'Toole.
I'll be going to go to heaven now.
I'm going to go to heaven? Thank you. All right. It was an interesting experience, but I can see Mike on camera. So yeah, it was great for Alberta Munis, learning about ICF and just getting along with our neighbors. And at RMA, we heard their side on what they deal with. And so it's more of an advocacy program. When, when we're down there, we're there to support our neighbors and learn about their challenges. and learn about their challenges and how we can work together. So just a couple of things over the last couple of weeks. So that's my report.
Thanks, Counselor Berg. Counselor Bosch. Go ahead, Counselor Bosch.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mayor Clayton. For me, I attended the Northwestern Polytechnic Students Union or Students Association Chamber Mixer at that facility. It was good. Lots of food, lots of people, probably 150 plus. So really, really good turnout. I did attend a youth housing first presentation. And that is with organizations working with, for instance, Sunrise House and CSD, really looking at past policies and procedures and how things are changing in working with youth to new ways of dealing with the issues that they're dealing with. I attended the Sport Connection Board meeting. That, we looked at, you know, where we're sitting with the number of youth who want to get into sport and the issues that we have with potential lack of facilities or more of an issue is lack of coaching. So if I could encourage somebody to get out there and put their hat in for becoming a coach, that would be awesome. You would make a lot of kids happy. And then we looked at who, like looking at who might be on the outside of that sport. You know, line where, you know, you're getting the kids that are getting into, onto the teams and such, but there's so many kids waiting to do something. And whether it's competitive or more of a social sport, I think we need to look at that too, because perhaps what we're thinking as a council and a community on building facilities, maybe there's a whole bunch more or there's different options. I attended the Storm Board Meeting. And just a plug for them, they have a celebrity dinner hosting Jack Michaels and Louis Brusk, DeBrusk. They're going to come and speak to everybody and give us some highlights on the Oilers, right? I think. And I'm a hockey mom. I don't, but yeah, you'd think I'd know this, but April 14th. So I said, I hope people can grab some tickets or grab a table with their friends and go to the Storm Celebrity Dinner. I also attended the Art Gallery Committee Meeting, and the art auction is April 22nd. That will be held at the Pomeroy this year. And so we're looking forward to people coming to attend for that. Again, tickets are on sale, whether single or buy a table or become a sponsor. Additionally, I, last Monday, went to the MLA Forum. And good luck to the contestants. We will know tonight on who's the big winner on that and look forward to working with them. And additionally, the post-budget discussion with Mr. Taves. So it was busy. Thank you.
Thanks for that. Counselor O'Toole, you had something to add?
Yes, I'd be wrong if I didn't bring this up. I was able to sit down with the organizing committee for the 2024 National Aboriginal Hockey Championships. And one of the people that is looking at facilities and the community and where hotels and features of the community that stand out, we, I was joined with her and she's, can't really give out too many secrets, but she's pretty happy what she sees here. And with that, I am now done my report.
Thanks for that, Counselor O'Toole. Many of the events that I attended were already mentioned. I will highlight a couple other ones. With myself and 25 associations and mayors from across, mayors and reeves from across Alberta, we are a member of the Community Rail Advocacy Alliance. They've been busy at, during the Art Rural Municipality Association meetings, we met with Minister Jean, Minister Horner, Minister Wilson, and Parliamentary Secretary Emily Getson to talk about the rail disparities in our region, in particular in northwestern Alberta. Then during Alberta municipalities meetings last week, we updated Minister Schultz. So she knew the impact that was directly happening to the municipalities that were represented at the table. We also, I attended the Midsize City Mayors Caucus where 24 mayors from, Midsize City Mayors from across Alberta met in Cochrane City Hall. Interesting story about their city hall. It was a former ranch house that was in turn with a significant amount of land given to the municipality for a dollar. In turn, they put between $5 and $10 million into it. And now it serves as a, an event venue as well as council chambers and city hall. So it's quite a unique building. And Cochrane, if you're in Cochrane, check it out. It's a great facility. During that meeting, we had the opportunity to meet with Premier Smith, as well as MLA leader Rachel Notley, as well as Barry Marshida, leader of the Alberta Party, where we discussed needs of mid-sized cities. We talked everything from housing needs, infrastructure funding needs, partnerships and advocacy with the province. We talked about homelessness and mental health, addiction needs, healthcare needs. And really, it was an opportunity for the 24 of us to have one-on-one conversations in a relatively small group to talk about the like-minded needs of mid-sized cities. It was a great opportunity and a great conversation with all the leaders. As well, we worked on our advocacy priorities and what the next steps are for mid-sized cities to advocate with the new government following the election. I also attended the Rising Above event, as noted, great event. Congratulations to all the volunteers and to the organization for putting on an excellent event. I attended an onboarding session. So every few weeks at the city, if you're a new employee or if you're not, we have a new process. So we're incorporating people who are existing employees, but also onboarding new employees. I literally go there for five minutes, talk about you guys and make jokes about you and then leave. So I'm joking, but really, it's a great opportunity to let the new hires in the room know about, you know, our role within the organization and I really enjoy that time. I also, last week, had an opportunity to jump on a call with Minister Amory from Children's Services. I was joined by Chief McEckren, as well as Mr. Tarrant and MLA Allard. We talked about childcare deficiencies and needs in our community. It was a good conversation, which is leading to significantly much more work and many more conversations to be had. So I'll keep you updated on that. As mentioned, attended the TARP auction, who I don't know if I heard, but they raised $514,000 on tarps alone that night. They had a very lively live auction and a great event. So great to see the TARP auction goes to the riders and the other revenues for the Stomped event, which, as you know, is a large-scale tourism event put on by volunteers in our, in our region. And then on Sunday, I had the opportunity to bring greetings at the 34th Annual Fiddler's Jamboree. It was, they haven't had a jamboree in three years, so it was the first one back since the pandemic. So they were very lively and very excited to be in person. And so thanks to them for inviting me and thanks to Counselor O'Connor and O'Toole for joining me. And with that, I will adjourn the meeting and see you all soon. Thank you.